A call to order, our city council meeting. Please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call Sylvia.
Mayor Clark.
Here.
Council President Harris.
Here.
Councilor King is absent. Councilor Kuiper?
Here.
Councilor Robinson?
Here.
Councilor Garland?
Here.
Councilor Young?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, I have approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
If I move, we approve. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, council. Consent agenda, approval of June 20th, 2017, city council meeting minutes. Resolution 2017-055, appointing Mattie Gavel-Briggs to the Cultural Arts Commission. Resolution 2017-056, appointing Matthew Scanton to the Cultural Arts... Shandene, my apologies, to the Cultural Arts Commission. Resolution 2017-057, authorizing the city manager to take actions necessary for accepting the State of Oregon Department of Transportation, also known as ODOT, request for transfer of state road right-of-way portions of southwest Alexander Lane into city jurisdiction and maintenance control. Do I have a motion to approve consent?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, council. Citizen comments. Sylvia, do I have citizen comments? Come on forward and just push the button until it turns green. Could you pu...
You can lift up.
Yeah, could you push the button? But the people on the television won't. Just push the button on the front.
It'll turn green.
It'll turn green.
On the...
Give them some assistance there. Thank you, Julia. There you go. You've got it. You're live.
Right. I came in to get my business license renewed, brought a check. Expected to be no problem. I was told I had to go online. I said, "Come on, guys. You gotta be ready to take a check." Get out of here. We don't want to talk to you. Okay, fine. Went home, tried. Had no success whatsoever. Came back, said, "Hey, come on. Got to take my check. I can't, you know. Time's money. Leave. We don't want to talk to you." Fine. Tried again. Wouldn't work. Got my wife involved. That didn't work. For a couple of reasons. Then she came down with her computer to the desk upstairs. Nobody would help her. She spent an hour there trying to do it. Would not work. Finally got a third party involved. And I believe what they finally found out was we had to say we had one employee when we had none. That machine, they finally took it. You need to have a system where somebody can walk in, cut a check, and pay you. Take the money. Your site is terrible. If you misspell something and you go back to correct it, you have to start from the beginning. Your address does not even have your zip code on it. Unless they've changed that. Anyway, that's my spiel.
Thank you. Do we have any additional citizen comments?
Mayor, the only other comments I have are for the new business item.
Okay.
So that's open discussion, so it's up to council on whether or not you're going to accept comment for that.
Okay, so we will address that during new business. So at this time, we don't take citizen comment on new business during citizen comment. So we will just move forward. Joe, could we give a little insight into possible updating of our business license?
Yeah, this is the first I've heard about this.
Okay.
Mr. Cable has not... This hasn't risen to my office in terms of the issues he was having. The business license program is operated by the Finance Department.
Okay.
We don't get a lot of complaints like this, so I'd like to follow up with him and find out what's going on.
We have a business in Sherwood, and I can agree with some of his frustrations in that system.
Yeah, so I'd like to follow up with him. I have his contact information and learn more.
Okay, great. So we'll get back to you and see if we can...
If we need to make some improvements to the system, we will.
Okay, great. All right.
And I'd like to follow up with you, Councilor Harris, if you had similar questions about improving the system as well. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on to presentations. Swearing in of Sherwood Police Officer. Chief Grove.
Thank you, Mayor. I would call Officer Kelly Bertrand to come up and join us. And as he's coming up, just a brief synopsis. You can just go ahead and take a seat there for a moment or two. So Officer Bertrand is hired to replace our final vacant position caused by the departure of another, one of our other officers. Officer Bertrand began his career in 2005, and he comes to us from the Hillsboro Police Department, where he was most recently, just like, a week or so ago, was employed, till he started here. And he and his family live in Sherwood. And so I'm going to give him an opportunity here to say a few words or anything he wants to, and then we'll move forward.
I have a lot of family here, parents. Those are the customs for my decision to go on. We're all very proud Sherwood residents. Very proud to be a part of this community.
Super, okay. We'll get on with it. Now you can start.
All right.
Better camera angle that way. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Kelly Bertrand.
I, Kelly Bertrand.
Do solemnly swear that I will support...
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
...and abide by the Constitution...
And abide by the Constitution.
...and laws of the United States...
And laws of the United States.
...and of the State of Oregon.
And of the State of Oregon.
...that I will uphold and enforce...
That I will uphold and enforce.
...the laws of the State of Oregon.
The laws of the State of Oregon.
...the ordinances of the City of Sherwood.
The ordinances of the City of Sherwood.
...and the rules and regulations...
And the rules and regulations.
...of the Sherwood Police Department.
Of the Sherwood Police Department.
...and that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully.
...honestly...
Honestly.
...and impartially...
And impartially.
...discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties.
...of the Office of Police Officer...
Of the Office of Police Officer.
...during my continuance therein...
During my continuance therein.
...to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I think somebody's going to come up and do the honors for us.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Glad to have you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Chief, may I ask you a question? I bet you could guess what I'm going to ask.
Kind of left the news out of that one there.
I think we can all guess what you're going to ask.
Is our new officer assigned to any school, perhaps, as a resource officer?
Perhaps. So, as a matter of process, for lack of a better term, we need to hire officers as police officers because that's what the extent of their career will be. And so that's the hire we made. However, this was advertised as a lateral hire with the expectation and the hope of filling that SRO position, which was vacant. So, yes, I guess, is the eventual hopeful answer. But he has to go through his initial lateral training, which we don't expect to be very difficult for him because obviously he's an experienced police officer. But he needs to figure out, you know, Sherwood and how we do things here, which is, you know, a little bit better than most other agencies, so...
No bias. No.
There'll be no other... Now I'm wondering. I wonder if there's officers from other departments.
Yes.
Oh, okay. All in good fun. But anyway, so, once his training's complete, then he'll transition into that position, so...
Good, thanks. Fantastic. Well, welcome, welcome. Congratulations and welcome to the team. Okay. Recognition of Eagle Scout Award recipient. Kyle Ernst. Is Kyle here tonight? No? Oh, heavens. All right. Well, we recognize Kyle and congratulate him on his Eagle Scout. And we will send you this certificate. What we do is we normally ask you all about what your project was, and we love to hear about it, but we'll send you this. And thank you for working hard. Recognition of Sherwood High School students' academic achievements. Mayor Clark. Okay, so we have... Mayor Clark goes Mayor Clark. So we have quite a stack and lots and lots of amazing academic achievers here tonight. And so do you want the council to come down as we read?
Yeah, I think what we normally do, we usually do this over a two-night period.
Yeah.
We do have folks that RSVP that we're going to read first. If anyone is here that I didn't read, that didn't RSVP, we'll just let them come up. And then we have this other stack over here, which is much bigger, and we'll find their respective certificate. Counsel usually comes down and congratulates folks. It is always amazing the number of students that perform with such high academic success here. So this is usually a very long list of students to recognize, so...
Which is awesome, although it makes Mayor Clark's hand go numb if I try to do the whole stack, so it's good that we split it in half because we have lots and lots of high achievers here in the City of Sherwood.
And I always apologize if I get some of the names...
Yeah, there's a little bit of butchering of names. I'm not going to lie. It happens. Okay, so council, come on down.
And I believe, Sylvia, correct me, these are all people that have achieved a 4.0 GPA. Is that correct?
It's an accumulative GPA, so a lot of the seniors that are listed there have a 4.0 for the entire four years that they were in high school.
Which is pretty amazing, so... All right, we're going to start with Anna Brunner.
And when your name is called, come on up, and I will give you your certificate. Let's give her a round of applause.
Next is Tyler Christensen. Our next student is Natalie Driscoll. Alyssa Haslip. Emily Heath. Madison Langan. Emily Latweeson. Is it all right? Thank you. Andrew Lee. Travis Matlock. Rebecca Mifflin. Okay, this probably will be wrong. Chimmy Marilli... Marilla? Marillo? Miles Schultz. Jonathan Wakefield. And Mayor and council, the last one that I have as an RSVP is Isabel Robinson.
So is anyone here that we have not called for... Okay?
Sophia Knutson.
Sophia Knutson!
Come on up. We'll find it. Is that with a K?
With the K.
We may need to get your signature.
And I'll look for it. With the K, she said?
With a K.
They are not.
Were we missing anyone else tonight? Great. Mayor, I think you might want to remind folks that there are refreshments.
Yes, so thank you all for coming. And I know that you all want to stay for our riveting council meeting. I know it. But should you have other things that you want to go and do that are more riveting, I don't see how, you're welcome to join the reception in the hall, where we have some refreshments for you and our heartfelt congratulations on your great academic achievement. So thank you for coming tonight. They never take me up on it. We shall. We shall. We shall. Yes. Yeah. Okay, I'll give it a moment for people to... Okay. All right, next we have employee spotlight. City Manager, Joe Goll.
Yes, Mayor and council, just for folks that are not familiar, we, once a month, always recognize one of our employees, usually for one of two things. The first is if someone did something above and beyond their normal work that we want to highlight. You may remember, we highlighted some folks that worked on the float. Leah, over in the Arts Center, we highlighted her efforts, and Mary. So that's one category. The other is usually folks that have worked for the city for many years that maybe don't get recognition publicly. I would say the person we're going to recognize tonight meets both categories. So I'm going to have Lance Gilgan come up, and we're going to embarrass Lance a little bit.
Yay! That's our favorite!
So Kristen Schweitzer couldn't be here tonight. She would be normally giving some highlights of Lance's...
He's so excited.
And he's very excited about being here.
Love it.
So... You just sit there for a couple minutes and take your punishment, Lance, so... So a little bit about Lance. He was hired back in December of 2000 as a parks maintenance worker and was promoted less than a year later to utility worker two and began helping with gym and field coordination. In 2002, he became the recreation coordinator. In 2004, Lance's position description was updated to fit that of a field house manager, and he assumed oversight of the Sherwood Old Town Field House to his list of duties. In December 2004, Lance was officially promoted to recreation supervisor. I see a pattern here of promotions early on. In December 2007, former city manager Ross Schultz presented Lance with a monetary award for his outstanding performance, noting that the field house saw a profit for the first time since opening in 2004. And that has been largely the case ever since. I think there was one year, a couple of years ago, that we finished in the red a little bit. But overall, he has turned that financial performance around at the field house. He continues to manage the field house, which saw approximately 20,000 visitors this year. And he works closely with the school district and the various sports leagues in town to coordinate all the gymnasium and field space, which is not an easy task, if you can imagine. In his free time, Lance enjoys fishing, camping, golfing, coaching, watching sports, and spending time with his family. He is married to his high school sweetheart, Kelly, who I believe is here tonight. They have four grown children and just welcomed their first grandchild. He is definitely someone that is worthy of recognition and does a lot of stuff behind the scenes to make things happen in town. And I think that was, you all know that, and that's what generated the enthusiasm in terms of inviting Lance up, so... He doesn't want to say anything. You may get a question, so... I have sources, namely Kristen Schweitzer, so...
Seventeen years, you know things. You've been here 17 years. You know, we know things. It's like family at that point.
Yes, exactly.
Well, I think this is a great choice. I think that we're very lucky to have Lance. With two children of my own very involved in athletics, I have seen gyms opened up at the crack of dawn when people forget the keys. And I have seen, "Oh, my gosh, we need a janitor over here." Mop on aisle nine moments. And so I know that running a lot of athletic facilities is a big task, and you do a fantastic job. So, Joe, I think this was a great choice. So thank you for working so hard.
I also think it was a great choice. Lance, oh, my gosh. I think I met you when I was on the Parks and Recreation Board in 2002. And I have to say, never have I seen someone do so much with so little for so long. And I wonder if the secret to your success of making the Old Town Field House so profitable is the pop and the refrigerator. Part of it, and all your hard work. So we don't get over there to see you very much, but, boy, if anybody has, I've ever seen anybody pull out an incredible plethora of work, it's you. So, and the athletics programs that we have here are definitely a result of it, so... Yeah, they are. So thank you.
So thank you. Congratulations.
And I have actually been pulling into the parking lot in Lake Oswego to two different facilities when I got a quick text message saying, "Jim was double booked. Thing, event canceled." So I'm in Lake Oswego, and the event is canceled. I have been, never had that happen in Sherwood. And not to say that it hasn't ever happened in the history. I've only, I've only been going to Lake Oswego for sports for two years, and it happens three times in two years. I've been doing sports in Sherwood with my kids for five years, and it's never happened. So I think, of course, it's going to happen once in a while, but I think it's still a testament to the work that you do and how hard it is to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will add one tiny thing that hasn't been discussed. I also think you do a great job tracking the money going in and out of the field house. And I, and you should know that we actually look at those. I want you to know that you don't do them just because Kristen says you have to. We, we look at it, and we appreciate all that you do. And so, thank you.
Was that too bad? No. Thank you.
At least we're not all coming down to hug you. You're welcome. Maggie got him.
Uh-oh. Maggie got him.
All right. Introduction of new employees. Library Manager, Adrian Dolman-Calkins. You probably scared her. She's like, "Oh, no."
Good evening, councilors and mayor. I am delighted to introduce to you our newest librarian at Sherwood Public Library. This is Amanda Woods. And Amanda started with us on April 10th, 2017. She is in the part-time, 20-hour librarian position, which you may remember was funded through the Washington County Cooperative Library levy, which was from last fiscal year. She has her master's in library and information science from Emporia University, which is one of the best-known library schools here in the region. She has her bachelor's in arts and letters from PSU Portland State University. She interned at Beaverton City Library and at Cornelius Public Library, which you may know are both members of Washington County Cooperative Library Services. So we love that she already knew the cooperative. She's already inducted into our culture and excited about everything that the library has to offer. She also was a student librarian at OHSU Library. So she knows that research side. She knows the view from the hill there, working with medical professionals and students alike there. And then I just wanted to mention that she already has a strong following with the kids and the parents and storytime. Amanda's going to share with you a little bit about what she's been working on. All right, well, it's nice to meet you all officially. For the last few months, I've been starting to take over preschool storytime on Thursday mornings. And I do have a few kids who know me pretty well now, which is always exciting. And as well, I've been working really hard on creating programs and displays that have to do with current events and local interests. So, for example, right now, we have a fairy tale display up in youth services in the young adult section. And hopefully, we'll have one in kids soon because the Robin Hood Festival is just about upon us. And coming up, we'll have programming for the eclipse in August. So it's great to join your team.
Welcome, welcome. Thank you very much. And we're very excited to have you. Did council have any questions?
I have seen on social media a lot of buzz around some of the current event displays that, over the last couple of months, people are really excited about it. And I appreciate that you're not shying away from political issues either, so... Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. Let's give her a round of applause. All right, new business. Filing of initiative petition, ISHE 2017-1 with governing body. City Attorney Josh Soper and City Recorder Sylvia Murphy.
Okay, I'll take the lead on this one. And Sylvia, if you have anything to add, please feel free to jump in at any point. And councilors, if you have any questions at any point, feel free. So the City of Sherwood received an initiative petition regarding effectively rescinding the ban on recreational marijuana facilities that voters put in place last November, and also adopting some land use regulations relating to recreational marijuana facilities. Enough signatures were submitted and verified by Washington County Elections Office. And so the next step in the process is to file that initiative petition with the city council. Council has three or four, depending on how you look at it, options from this point forward. One is that you can adopt the measure, which would entail us bringing it back to you as an ordinance at your next meeting, and you go through the normal ordinance adoption procedures. And if passed, and that would go into effect, according to the timelines for ordinance is going into effect, without having to go to the voters. Second option is to reject the measure, and then it will go to the voters in November. The fourth option, skipping the third option, the fourth option is the same effect as the second option, which is if you take no action, is the same effect as rejecting it. The third option is to refer a competing measure to the ballot. So that would involve this measure still going to the ballot, but then you can also craft a competing measure that would appear on the same ballot. And that would involve us asking you for some direction about what that would look like, and then crafting that and bringing that back to you at your next meeting to place on the ballot. This is going to go to the November 2017 election if you do not decide to enact it yourselves. The costs of that are unknown. It depends on what else is on the ballot. But we estimate somewhere between $3,500 and $6,000 based on previous elections in a similar timeframe. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
I have a question. So you talked about option four, referring a competing measure. If we do something like that, would that cost an additional $3,500 to $6,000?
How does that work? Do they divide it by the number of measures on the ballot? Is that how it works? So it would not result in additional cost? The cost would be divided between the two, right?
Right, so the entire cost of an election, Mayor, regardless of how many ballots or who submits those ballots, the postage, the production of the voter's pamphlet, all that is divided amongst all the participating parties.
Okay. But...
So say the total cost for the election was $100,000, and there were 10 measures on the ballot. Each one is going to cost $10,000.
Correct. Each one would have an equal cost. Each one would have an equal cost in that.
Whereas if there are nine measures on the ballot, then each one's going to be, you know, $11,000 some dollars.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
So I have a question just on the petition, where it actually has the question listed. Is this language what would appear on the November ballot as written here, or is that subject to?
Yeah, so on page thirty-seven of your packet, that's the ballot title, that went through the ballot title challenge process and was not challenged. So that is what would actually appear on the ballot. There's separately in the voters pamphlet an explanatory statement. So if this, if this measure is not, if this measure is going to go forward and go on the ballot, then I'll also be crafting an explanatory statement and bringing that back to you for approval at the next council meeting.
Because this question here, as written, seems to be much more of a positive, like you are voting for this rather than the previous November statement, which was kind of the double negative, voting against the, or for repealing, I think is the way it was kind of written before, so.
Yeah, and so the way that the questions are required to be written by law is that an affirmative answer to that question is the impact of the measure being enacted. So, the answer to this question, if you want the answer to be yes, then we will be allowing these facilities. Last time, if the answer was yes, we're prohibiting the facilities. So that's why it had to be written in the opposite direction last time.
Got it.
I have a question too. Are the land use provisions of this petition, are they the same as the land use provisions that were adopted by the planning commission and, well, I guess the planning commission? In compared, when they were, when they were researching all of those things that we wanted to put in place for either or medical and recreational marijuana in Sherwood? Because I know we went to a lot of effort to get to that point.
Right, that's a great question. So, we have in place land use regulations for medical facilities. We also went through the entire process of preparing regulations for recreational facilities. And if I recall correctly, council actually adopted those contingent on the ban failing.
Oh, yeah.
So if the ban did not go into place, then those regulations would go into place. These land use regulations are based on, but different from, those land use regulations.
Okay.
Because these are specific to light industrial and general industrial, right? Weren't the previous ones, wasn't there some commercial allowed in there?
I believe so. Is that right? Yeah.
These are more restrictive.
It's more restrictive in some ways, and then also just different in other ways. Like the hours of operation, I believe, are different. There's some grandfathering of existing parcels where there are currently medical facilities.
And all those land use regulations would appear in the ballot pamphlet?
No, they will not.
So, okay. It would just be the summary and the executive?
Just this, on page thirty-seven, the caption, question, and summary is what's on the ballot. An explanatory statement, we have a little bit more length to work with, it can be up to 500 words, so we can go into a little bit more detail. But if you flip to the attachment, you can see the complete text is several pages, so that's not going to fit in the voters pamphlet.
So the public's never going to see that.
Public is only going to be able to see that if they look on our website.
Okay. Any questions, council? Okay, I understand that there were requests for, I'll open up the public comment time. Sherry Ralston?
Hi, my name is Sherry Ralston. I'm the owner of Western Oregon Dispensary in Newburgh, which is recreational, and Sherwood, which is currently medical. On today's agenda is a matter that's meaningful for our company. It's the initiative to overturn the ban for recreational marijuana businesses. This initiative ban on recreational businesses was drafted very carefully this time with an approach to limit the businesses only in strictly defined areas of Sherwood's industrial zone. I've come tonight to share with you the council reasons to consider adopting it rather than putting it on a ballot for a public vote in November. I also want to just note that this ballot wasn't challenged in any way with any appeals. So I'm a proud Sherwood resident, having lived in here in this area my whole life. I'm a mother of three grown boys, a wife, a businesswoman. I have values that, about safety and security of the community. And as you know, the November vote was narrowly rejected in the recreational market in Sherwood. And after this defeat, we went out and we talked to folks to find out why. We really wanted to know why they voted no. And we saw some patterns. There was confusion over yes meant no, no meant yes, but mostly what we found was people didn't understand that there were limitations on where those facilities could be. We heard things like, well, we don't want to be like Highway 99 where there's one every thousand feet. We don't want to be like Lincoln City where there's nine dispensaries. And so that was unfortunate, because I think that the council did a great job of limiting those areas, it just wasn't conveyed in that ballot. We heard consistently, well, gosh, if we had known that, we would have voted for it. So, we took the time to word this ballot in a way that restricted those facilities in an area that was not where residential communities are, where children don't congregate, where effectively it limits how many of those can pop up in the city of Sherwood. And we strongly support that. A few of you may have visited my locations and my, my production site. You've seen firsthand our emphasis on providing quality product, a secure welcoming facility that runs efficiently and quietly. We are a business just like anybody else. There's no reports of theft, no loitering, legal activity going on around these businesses. We've been open in Newburgh for a year and nine months, eight months now, nothing. The Kmart next door, the Circle K has been robbed twice. The neighborhood next to us has been robbed. One of the people that robbed the Circle K ran through our parking lot, the police came and asked if they could look at our cameras to see who it was. That's the only time we've had any one-on-one conversations with the police department in the city of Newburgh. We're valued there as a business. Our relationship with the OLCC, the counties, and the cities that we do business in is important to us. Adopting this petition now ensures that the city of Sherwood will have access sooner to the 3%.
So that's your time. Want to wrap it up?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that I did put some figures together really quickly. It's based on Newburgh's numbers, and so there, we think that Sherwood will do a little bit better volume, but your 3% should be anywhere between 70 and $120,000 in revenue. The state 17% is based off the volume of the store and the population of the city. They collected 60 million, the goal was 10 million, so it's six times more, they're bigger than 90 million this year. The attorney did draft some general numbers. The city could have left an additional 70 to 120,000 based off of that. So that's lost revenue until this is passed. It's huge numbers for the city. And you're losing those numbers every day that we're not open.
Thank you. Thank you. Tone, Twan Nui? Is the green light on, sir?
Yes.
Okay, awesome.
Mayor Clark, President Harris, members of the council. For the record, my name is Twan Nell. I represent Midori LLC, a medical marijuana business here in Sherwood. And like Sherry Ralston, I would like to share with you a few reasons why adopting this petition is the right move for the city. When we began this petition effort, we were pleasantly surprised by the overwhelming support we received from community members. In just three weeks, we were able to gather more than 2,100 signatures, making this one of the fastest petition signature gathering efforts in Oregon municipal history. Members of the council, today you have the power to immediately adopt this initiative and allow properly regulated recreational businesses in our community. At this time, I'd like to address some points relevant to this discussion. Many people we've spoken to have wondered why we don't just continue with medical marijuana since it was already established here. The answer is simple. Unfortunately, Oregon's medical marijuana program is dead. Eighteen months ago, there were more than 300 medical dispensaries. As of today, the official count is just 31. Due to an incredibly successful recreational push, the medical side has all but collapsed. Within the last nine months, my company has lost more than 97% in revenue. My remaining customers are now scattered across the entire state. My deliveries these days take on average between four to six hours each way. That's eight to 12 hours of driving to earn a measly 3% of what I was making just a year ago. Well, imagine if the same restrictions were forced upon a local bar or a local sandwich shop. No one would think that that's okay. My business doesn't exist in a vacuum. There is an entire community out there that wants this city to open up, to finally start benefiting from this new economy. Of course, I understand that there will always be an opposition. Some people think that marijuana is unequivocally bad, but we know that that is just simply not factual. Well, obviously, if you use an absurd amount of it, you're going to have a really bad time. But using that logic, you can claim that about pretty much anything. Imagine trying to eat too many cheese pizzas or having too much coffee. You're not going to have a good time either, but no one's trying to outlaw pizzas and coffee. And plainly speaking, it's all about moderation. If one follows clear instructions, it's always 100% safe. However, clear instructions only come with regulated products. To think that just by outlawing marijuana, what can keep the bad stuff out is a very flawed line of reasoning. Sherwood, as we know, isn't an island in the middle of the ocean. There's no barrier to keep marijuana out. It's really in everyone's best interest to regulate the marijuana that people already consume here. But since rec became legal, Oregon's black market has actually been consistently shrinking. From 2015, illicit sales went from 74% to just 35% this year. These are good numbers. However, the black market persists in places where bans remain. When people don't have local access to marijuana, they don't just magically stop using it, they will rely on a different supply chain. Preventing legal marijuana will only have the effect of drumming up business for the illicit market.
That's your time, if you could wrap it up.
Sure. It basically boils down to just four points. Marijuana is safe when used responsibly. Medical market will soon disappear. Black market thrives when there's a lack of legitimate products, and the city will continue to miss out on much-needed state funds. Basically, by adopting this petition today, you can help to make Sherwood a better and safer community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any additional public comments? Okay, I'll close the public comment time and return to council. You have heard our report from our staff. Do you have any questions for staff?
I have a question, and that is, do we know who started this petition?
Okay, do you have the name of the chief petitioner?
The chief petitioner was Amarin Harris, a Sherwood resident. She had to be a Sherwood resident.
No relation, I don't know Amarin. I'm just saying.
I was wondering.
I mean, I know Amarin, but her last name isn't Harris.
Do we know her connection to the current facility that we have? Okay.
Any other questions for staff?
I guess my question would be, if this goes on the November ballot and it's approved on the November ballot, does it go into effect immediately? Is it January of the next year? How does that work with a petition like this, or a measure like this?
That's a good question. I believe it's after the vote is certified, which typically takes place in December.
December or January. So once the city receives the election results, the city has to adopt those, the council has to adopt those. Then at that time, whatever legal timeline we have to meet, we do have to adopt those first.
And what about licensing? Is it at that point then, if it was to be approved, that certain stores would be able to begin applying for licenses in Sherwood? Or can they do that beforehand?
Right, so there's a process to apply for a new license with OLCC, or to convert a license as a medical facility to a recreational facility. It would depend on those agencies' guidelines for licensing, but I believe that they can't actually start that process until the ban is effectively repealed. So that would start in December or January, they can make that transition.
So I have a question. What were the numbers on the ballot? The actual numbers of for and against on legalizing?
As luck would have it, I did print that out.
Yay!
I'm guessing someone back there planned it.
So I have the citywide numbers and also by precinct, if you're interested in that. So citywide, 56.41% voted in favor of banning. 43.59% voted against banning.
Could you give me the actual number of residents?
Number of voters?
Yeah.
Okay, so, yes votes, 5,388.
Wait, yes is ban?
Yes is ban.
Say it again.
5,388. No votes against banning, 4,164.
And if I recall on that, that received about 82% of votes that came in, I think was the?
The voter turnout.
Turnout, yes, for that ballot measure.
Run, I can divide that real quick.
I think it was something, something like that.
It was a high number.
Yep, it's 9,990 ballots cast out of 11,886 registered voters, 84%.
A follow-up question. Do you have the numbers for measure 91?
I do not have those numbers. I do have, for comparison, other measures that were on the same ballot in November. So for example, the, the school district bond measure, 55.06% in favor, 44.94% opposed. So, the ban actually got more votes in favor than the school district bond measure. I also have all the charter amendments, if you're interested with it, that's a law.
So the reason that I wanted those numbers is 5,388 people in the city of Sherwood were in favor of the ban.
If they read it properly.
If they read it properly, correct. And I guess you can make your assertions however you wish on that. And we've got 1,478 people who want this petition to go forward. I don't have a problem with cleaned up language and putting the petition forward. I think that's, that's fine. They got enough signatures to do it. But the number in the last election was large enough against that I'm not willing to just circumvent 5,388 of my citizens and make a decision that is against what they voted for. I am 100% okay putting it in front of them and saying, hey, you're going to miss out on the revenue. We've strengthened the parameters around how we can have the facility in the city of Sherwood. You've had petitioners talk to you, and maybe you didn't necessarily understand, or maybe you've rethought this issue, as you've seen facilities go in in other communities like Newburgh, and seen that it's not the big bad wolf that you thought it was. But I think that should stay with the voters.
I did just look up the measure 91 results. 56.11% in favor, 43.89% opposed. So, slightly fewer voted in favor of measure 91 statewide. So, slightly fewer voted in favor of measure 91 statewide than voted in favor of banning in Sherwood. That's just the statewide, yeah. I'll see if I can find, I'll see if I can find the...
Sherwood was opposite.
Yes, that's correct, yeah. I'm still looking for the Sherwood vote figures.
Counsel?
Josh, I think that was two years ago.
2014, yes.
Any other comments?
I have a comment.
Okay.
I agree with you, Mayor Clark, that I don't think we can just ignore what 5,388 of our citizens voted for the ban. So, I'm all, you know, there's enough signatures to put it back on the ballot, and the residents can make that choice again. I had talked to quite a few people who had no confusion with the ballot language. And so, yeah, I'm in agreement.
I will also make my comment that I am vehemently opposed to having a recreational facility in Sherwood. And I do not believe that we should vote to approve any such petition ourselves. I'm okay with sending it to the voters. And my preference would be to either reject it outright or take no action.
I'll certainly go ahead and speak then. I think there's no secret to anybody on the council or anybody in the public that I'm certainly in favor of recreational marijuana sales in Sherwood. I made that pretty clear when I ran for council and then through social media. I've been pretty open about that. I think I would, you know, obviously, it's not gonna get approved tonight. I would vote in favor of approving it tonight, but I can see that we don't have a majority for that this evening. I think one of the reasons that I would vote in favor of it is when the ban went in in January of 2016, I believe it was. The council at the time, which I was not a part of, spoke to continuing the ban to see how other cities fared in allowing sales in their, in their communities. You know, as we, we don't know what the actual revenues for those cities are yet. Those are still to be tabulated and distributed by the state shortly. I personally have not heard of the sky falling in Newburgh or King City. Some studies that have been put out, and I can certainly share this with anybody who might be interested, that do show that, you know, violent crime rates in Washington, Colorado have decreased since legalization, to some of the points Mr. Ralston and Mr. No, thank you. You know, brought, you know, there are some increases in, or some increased security in the establishments that are required. And part of our regulations that would be going into place in this ballot measure do require security cameras, if there are bars on windows, that they would be on the insides, they wouldn't be, you know, looking like a jail, putting it in the industrial area or in the existing medical facility. As Ms. Ralston stated, there has not been any issues, and she's been open there. So, I don't have the same fears that I think some people do have about selling recreational marijuana here in Sherwood. And as was hinted at as well earlier, and I've made a point of, I think, and Mayor Clark has also mentioned, there's the obvious revenue that would be coming to the city that I think we, after coming through the budget committee sessions that we went through in May and June, would all recognize that we do sorely need some more revenues here in Sherwood. So, if it comes to a vote tonight on voting for this, I'd certainly vote in favor for it, but I am definitely willing to see this go to the ballot in November as well.
So, I would also vote in favor of it tonight if we were voting on that, and for a couple of reasons, all of the things that Sean spoke about. But I think a couple of the things that are bothering me is that in this day and age, in this society, when there's a legal commodity being sold, we're telling a business that they can't open up. And I think that if we decided we were gonna ban alcohol in Sherwood, we would have an uproar. And I, it frustrates me that we're treating this any differently. And it really speaks to the scare tactics that have worked to make people afraid of cannabis. There is no single recorded death from a marijuana overdose, not one. Yet, how many overdoses from alcohol and prescription medications are every single year? And so, the idea that we're telling somebody who owns a business in Sherwood that you can't run your business here anymore, and in fact, you, businesses that have been running here are going to shut down because of these, in my opinion, alternative news, information, is very frustrating to me. I happen to know Tuan personally through this process. I've met him several times, and he's going to lose his business in Sherwood because of this ban. And it's very frustrating to me, because I think if somebody wanted to ban cigarettes in Sherwood, or we wanted to close down the bars, we wanted to close down the liquor store, I think we would have an uproar. But we're not treating this the same way. I have a question for the chief while I'm at it. He's super excited about it, I can tell. Can you give me a ballpark range? I know you don't have numbers, and I didn't give this to you earlier to check it out. But how many calls do you go on for drunken disorderly, calls for alcohol-related issues on a, let's say, in a week?
It varies so greatly, counselor, honestly, I couldn't tell you.
More than one?
Oh, yeah.
More than 10?
I know they happen.
10-ish, at least? Is there an at least?
Um, probably not. I'd say it's, would be closer to maybe a half a dozen on average.
And then how many would you say you go on for marijuana issue?
Well, I, again, I don't know. I don't know that we have...
About the same, average?
I don't know that we have any, any call type that would, that would clearly distinguish itself as a marijuana issue, because it's still so new. So, I, I, that's a...
Meaning you...
The reason I grimace, because I was sitting here thinking, okay, is anybody gonna ask me to weigh in on this? And it's really a difficult question to answer, just because we're so new in the program in Oregon that we really have nothing to do but, as has been mentioned, is to look at, look to other states. I clearly don't have a position on this. I can tell you that, you know, we do respond to incidents that are, that are related to and fueled by alcohol. I couldn't tell you if, you know, if we're in a position like that with marijuana. I mean, alcohol's been around for hundreds of years, so it's, it's really, at this point, and I'm not trying to just duck the question, but it's really an unfair question, because it's, it's so, at this point, it's still apples and oranges. I couldn't.
Okay, so, I'm gonna keep going. Domestic violence calls. How many of those generally involve alcohol? Is it most rare?
I'd say it's, it's very common.
And have you seen that same thing with cannabis?
Not to near the extent, no. But again, you, you have to, I think, to be fair, to answer the question, those two substances affect individually, individuals dramatically different.
Yes. Tell us about that.
You've heard the term angry drunk. So, some people respond to alcohol in very violent ways. They, they go to that extreme. Others would fit the profile of a friendly drunk, right? They're, they're not gonna cause anybody any problems. I've never, in, in all my years, professionally or personally, heard either of those expressions associated with the use of marijuana. So, there's no, from my perspective, that you, you couldn't draw the comparison, because I've never been aware of somebody, oh, careful, because when they get stoned, they're just violent. It's, it's not a, you know what I mean? It's, it's not a, it's not something that I'm aware of. And so, that's, it's, it's really kind of a difficult analogy to draw. The, it, it could be wholly possible that we respond to domestic situations where somebody has been using marijuana. I'm not sure that we would know that unless it were part and parcel to the call. For example, one partner was mad at the other partner because they were smoking or, or something like that. But otherwise, we, we probably wouldn't know unless we discovered it.
But not so much because the person was smoking.
But with alcohol, with alcohol, it's, it's generally very obvious that that is a factor in, in the situation.
So, I think the problem is people are not treating substances equally. And I think that it's happening here in Sherwood, and it's happening all over the place. And for me to tell a business that you're gonna shut down because we don't like what you sell just feels wrong to me. So, that's a majority of the reason. Also, I don't, it's proven over and over again that cannabis is not a gateway drug. Those statistics are easy to find, that scientific evidence is easy to see. Those are, that's just a silly argument that has been fixed and studied. But for us to just decide that a business is, is not worthy of Sherwood is not fair to me, and I don't think it's right, and I don't think it's the American way.
Counselor Harris?
I'm sorry, Counselor Kiper.
I would be Kiper.
Yeah, I'm like, too many Jennifers in the room.
Oh, gosh. I don't really have a strong opinion on one way or the other, but I, I do like the revenue that it comes in. You know, it's hard to say whether a business that will no longer be because of the existing situation, was that business built on speculation? Was it a speculative business based on the potential that we would approve recreational production and use? I don't know, but that is something to consider. So, I don't know if shutting down a business would necessarily be something that is based on having a rule and then taking it away. It could be that it was a speculative business, and I'm sorry about that. The other issue is, you know, a lot of the things that, that are mentioned with regards to marijuana and comparatively, how it compares to domestic violence use and alcohol, a lot of that is empirical. I, I don't have good data on that. I would like to see good data on that, but I don't have it. But the bottom line for me really is that we had 5,600 people or thereabouts, 5,300, that voted. And whether or not they voted because they misunderstood how it read or not, I'm willing to give it another chance to have it, to have the people vote on it. I think it's a, I think it's a well-written ordinance the way it is. I think it's, it tightens up a few things, and it's very clear, which is great for me. I, I would like to see marijuana sales in Sherwood, and so, I would definitely not change it. So, I, I would be for, I'd be for putting it to a vote, so.
Well, and I, I think with our testimony from Ms. Ralston, I think hearing the statistics of the possibility of revenue for the city was, was good information for citizens to have. I think that that is something that, you know, people maybe will think about when they're voting for this, particularly in light of the things in the budget that we were not able to achieve because we didn't have the money.
I have a few more questions, follow-up, if I could, somewhat based on revenue, actually. So, I know that when this was on the ballot in November, we also had an additional ballot measure of a 3% city tax. How would we go about doing that for the November ballot as well to make sure that if we do have this on the ballot for approval in November, that we can also add the 3% city tax? I mean, it did pass in last November, but that, does that, is that in effect?
No, that was, that was contingent on this one, on the, on the ban failing.
Okay, so we would have to have an addition, a new...
So, we can, we can prepare, we can just resurrect the same language as before and bring that back to the next council meeting.
Okay, 'cause I would like to see that, for sure. Because as I recall, the numbers on that or the rules on that, that 3% is on taxes, or sales tax on sales within the city, and that money stays within the city.
Correct.
And that goes to general fund, I think is where that goes.
And is that the max, 3%?
3% is the max, that's right.
And we're not too, 'cause I, I remember that there were timelines on that. We're not too late to enact that, are we? Since it did pass last time, okay, all right. I just wanna make sure.
And then, the, another question I have is I know there have been some changes to measure 91 since it originally passed. The Oregon legislature has kind of tinkered with that a bit. As I understand, there's a 17% tax on, the additional 17% tax, which would be the state tax. Do you know, has anything changed with the distribution of those revenues as they were originally approved? Because I, I have the, where it was supposed to be distributed originally when it was passed, it was 40% would go to the common school fund, 20% to mental health, alcoholism, and drug services accounts, 15% would go to the state police account, 20% would go to local law enforcement agencies, and 5% to the Oregon Health Authority for alcohol and drug abuse prevention, early intervention, and treatment services.
Do you know that there was a bill in the legislature to change that formula? I don't know if it passed before the session.
Do you know what that bill was, the number?
We'll verify that.
Okay. I wanted to caution those in the audience and listening on television that while I respect Ms. Ralston, there is nothing to suggest to me that the numbers she threw out are accurate numbers. And until I see data that actually details how that number was calculated, I would not rely on that number at all. I think it would be premature and even irresponsible to rely on that number as a basis for passing the petition. So, I challenge my, my co-counsel in readily accepting numbers that are presented without documentation and research.
And she said they weren't accurate, they were ballpark figures, so.
Well, and I've seen similar in many of the meetings that I've attended. And obviously, these are ballpark, as you say.
The revenue is standard, you can look that up anywhere.
Right, but the revenue is real. The revenue exists, there is revenue. And it, it is there. What that revenue is, citizens, you can research that yourself.
But the revenue we're receiving right now is zero.
Right, exactly.
Absolute zero, that we know.
Exactly.
We haven't looked at the, I haven't asked the question in terms of when cities will, that allow recreational, when they're gonna start seeing that revenue? I think it is in the near future. Very soon, yeah.
I think if it's a fall.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
So, the League of Oregon Cities, I'm sure, will probably distribute information about what cities are receiving in terms of revenue and, and things like that. So, we'll have more definitive numbers, hopefully, sooner. Whether it's before the November election, I don't know, but it's, it's getting close.
Well, it's coming. The, the numbers are coming.
And the cities are getting the 3%. It's the 17 they're not yet, right?
Correct.
And in response to the reference to revenue, in my opinion, I believe that if, in fact, such an allowance is made for recreational marijuana in Sherwood, that that would necessitate spending just as much revenue that we would receive from sales on another police officer that would be required to patrol the areas.
I guess I would wonder how you're speculating on that? Where that information comes from?
Because a, a new officer, when we've been researching the cost of SROs, is in the range of the 120.
You're assuming there's a need for an additional officer.
I am assuming that, because that's my belief.
She assumes that now, so regardless of where we go.
Yeah, I think we're getting kind of auxiliary of the actual question before us. I'm not hearing a majority's support of moving forward. I am inclined to take no action and allow this to go to the voters.
Can we vote for it to go to the voters?
Nope, we do nothing.
Can you explain to me again the reject and the take no action? It seems like it's the same thing.
It is the same.
It essentially is.
Does somebody have to call for a vote?
The state law basically says that if you don't approve it, then it goes to the ballot. So, you can take an affirmative vote to reject it if you want, or you can just do nothing. And in either case, it will go to the ballot.
Taking an affirmative, taking a vote seems argumentative to me. So, I, I think that we should just move forward in our agenda.
Yeah, and I think historically, the council may remember Mr. Middleton's petition on the fee issue. You had, the council at the time had a decision to make, and the council took no action, and it went on the ballot. They said, let's have the voters decide. So, there is that precedent.
So, if I hear no objection, I'm gonna move forward in the agenda. Hearing no objection, public hearing, ordinance 2017-004, approving annexation to the city of Sherwood. of Sherwood of 2.21 acres comprised of one tax lot and adjacent southwest Old Highway 99W, road right-of-way within the Brookman Edition Concept Plan area. Matt Street?
And Mayor and Council, if I may, I need to read the public hearing statement first. Matt provides the staff report. The Sherwood City Council will hold a public hearing this evening on two items on the agenda. Ordinance 2017-004, approving annexation to the City of Sherwood of 2.21 acres comprised of one tax lot and adjacent to southwest Highway 99W, right-of-way within the Brookman Edition Concept Plan area. And ordinance 2017-005, approving amendments to Section 10.12.010 of the municipal code relating to the powers of the City Council and the City Manager to establish traffic control devices declaring emergency. The purpose of the hearing is to provide the public with an opportunity to submit testimony on the above said items. The order of business the council will follow in conducting this hearing is to hear a staff report, receive any correspondence, receive public testimony, receive additional staff comments, questions from the council will follow. The hearing will either then be closed or continued, and no further testimony will be received. Discussion by the council will follow. Any interested person may present testimony. If you wish to speak, please fill out the testimony form and submit it to the city recorder. The mayor will recognize those persons wishing to speak, and any questions should be addressed to the mayor. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and address for the record, as this hearing will be recorded, and limit your testimony to four minutes.
Thank you, Sylvia. The public hearing has been opened, and I will move to staff.
Thank you, Mayor, fellow counselors. Matt Street presenting Agenda Item 9A. The project is located in the southwest corner of the city. More specifically, it is located southerly of Huron Lakes Drive and easterly of Old Highway 99 West, near Middleton Cemetery and Middleton Elementary School. The applicant is proposing to annex two acres of property and 0.21 acres of right-of-way into the city. The site currently features one single family home and some outbuildings. The two-acre parcel is part of the Brookman Annexation Concept Plan. The land use and zoning designation identified in that concept plan for the site is medium-density residential low. The zoning would take effect if the project was approved. To help orient the council on where this is, there was a different annexation effort that was approved by the City Council a short while ago. That's shown here on the slide in front of you in blue. The applicant's site is shown in red. So it's not quite contiguous to the previous annexation. There are three levels of criteria that are required for annexation, the state, the regional, and the local levels. We're going to walk through each one of those individually. Naturally, we'll start at the state level. The annexation proposed tonight is similar to the Brookman Annexation that you recently saw. SB 1573 allows the annexation without a vote of the public, but it requires 100% of the landowners to participate in that annexation. Because this site is only two acres, it has two owners, and they're both signed on to the petition, to participate. The property must also be within the UGB, the urban growth boundary. It must be subject to a comprehensive plan and must be contiguous to the city. The property in question is indeed within the UGB and is within the concept plan area that we just discussed. In addition, the project conforms to all other city ordinances as well. SB 1573 also stipulates that all right-of-way required for urban-level services to be brought to the annexed parcel become part of that annexation. In this case, the only addition that was needed was the 0.21 acres to complete the road right-of-way for Old Highway 99. Now, the regional level has some similar and somewhat duplicative requirements to the state, but we're going to go over them anyway. At the regional level, the Metro Code that guides this is Section 3.09. This section requires the city to outline the urban services that would be available at the site. Those include stormwater, water, circulation, and sewer connections, all of which are currently available at the site. And all were included in the master planning documents for the Brookman Annexation Concept Plan. The annexation would cause the property to be withdrawn from a couple of county agencies, most specifically the Washington County Enhanced Sheriff Patrol District and the Urban Road Maintenance District, because the city would then be providing those kind of services. And those withdrawals are built into the agreements that we have between the city and the county. More specifically, Metro requires that the annexation be consistent with the urban services agreement, which was before you fairly recently with some small modifications. That basically just requires that the city have the annexed area already planned for in a comprehensive plan before it be annexed into the city. So we've already addressed that to a large extent. The project is also consistent with all other agreements, such as those with CWS and Tuolton Valley Fire and Rescue. And as previously discussed, the project is consistent with all facilities plans that were included as part of that Brookman Annexation. More specifically, Metro requires not only that the facilities be planned, but also that those proposed annexation facilities are promoted in an orderly and timely outlay, in an orderly and timely fashion for the city. As we said before, the stormwater facilities exist in Old Highway 99, directly contiguous to the proposed annexation. Water and sewer infrastructure is currently stubbed to the site from the residential properties to the north and to the east. And access to the property exists in three different locations. We're going to go over that a little bit more specifically in a moment. All existing infrastructure can accommodate the site, and no service provider expressed any concerns to staff when we transmitted this for their review. As a matter of fact, most of the service providers already provide services to the site, so there would be no duplicative efforts that would be moving forward. That was also one of the requirements from Metro. Now, changing gears to the local level. The local level, the Sherwood Comprehensive Plan guides annexations here in the city. The plan requires contiguous growth with no leapfrogging. As the slide in front of you shows, the area is basically surrounded by developed uses. You have the cemetery and the school to the west and residential uses to the north and to the east. Development inside the city is also encouraged by our comprehensive plan. However, there was already an analysis done on the available buildable land parcels within our city when Metro did this annexation expansion anyway. That's one of the things they have to go through in order to expand the UGB. So that was already done for the Brookman Annexation. So we're intrinsically consistent with that requirement. The comp plan also requires preservation of natural features. The site doesn't have any outlying natural features except trees, and those would basically be dealt with when we have the development stage come forward with a proposed map or some kind of subdivision. Proper access is also required by our comp plan. This very small site actually features three different points of access. The Sword Fern Lane and Huron Lakes Drive are both stubbed to the site currently. And the third point of access is the existing frontage on Old Highway 99. Another comprehensive plan policy requires a transition from rural to urban uses. This project is actually in the Brookman Annexation area, which did transition those uses from urban to rural. So as long as this project is consistent with that comprehensive plan addition, then it's intrinsically consistent with that requirement. Lastly, the comprehensive plan requires that the project be consistent with all policies for the Brookman Edition, because some additional policies were created just for the Brookman area in our comprehensive plan. Most of those policies that relate to the Brookman Comprehensive Plan were global and on a larger scale and weren't specific to individual parcels, and most of them have been satisfied. One example of that is the specific provision for a financing plan, which was adopted by the City Council in 2011. So with that, planning fields, the project does meet the requirements of the criteria, and we recommend approval. Because this is an annexation, that means adoption of an ordinance. A draft ordinance was provided in your packet. The City Council basically has two options. The City Council can hold the first reading tonight and then hold a second reading, which we already have pre-scheduled for August 15th. Or the City Council could adopt the ordinance you have in your packet tonight if it were a unanimous vote. That concludes staff's presentation. I think the applicant is here, but I've never met them, so I'm not sure if they're in the audience. But staff is available for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Questions, counsel? All right, I'll open up public comment time. Do we have public comment? All right. Scott Eddington?
Good evening. Scott Eddington, 23911 Southwest Aspen Lakes Drive. I just want to start by saying thank you to the staff and to City Council and Mayor Clark. Do appreciate all that you do for our city and for our community. It's nice to see faces out there at Trash Palooza or the Woodhaven Parade, so thank you for what you do here and again outside in our community.
Can I interrupt you for one second and have them turn the slide back to the one where we can see the streets that I think he's going to be talking about?
My packet, I blow it up for you. The second page actually has quite a bit more detail.
Which is great, but I'd like everyone to be able to see that.
So the screen that's shown is actually, I have a same copy in your packet, the last page. The site area, obviously, is what's been explained already. And I understand that tonight's hearing is strictly annexation, and I'm not here for or against that. But I did want to go on record, just to identify what I see as to be some potential traffic concerns as we expand the Brookman Edition Concept Plan. And knowing that even with this annexation and future development, that the portion that I'm addressing actually won't even be built out now, but knowing there would be investments of infrastructure and plans made that then could impact future development. And at that point, if things are already written in stone and the slate is already set, that we couldn't make any changes at a future date. So I wanted to go on record now, just bringing this concern up, so that as we do get into site plan development, there can be some more attention given to this. And also give staff and City Council an opportunity to potentially remove a traffic hazard that could be present. So if we go to that second page, I've highlighted the, in red, that box that shows the two intersections, really, is what it ends up being, and that's the challenge, is you have currently today, Aspen Lakes, it comes down from the south, and you have a lot of traffic that comes south and then turns left on a Maiden Fern, east. And that traffic actually does get pretty heavy in the morning, especially because Middleton Elementary is nearby, so you have a lot of commuters, a lot of families taking kids to school, and you have a lot of children walking through that area. If Sword Fern were pushed all the way through to Old Highway 99W, you'd now have a lot of cut-through traffic that would be going right through that area. And now you have Sword Fern coming into Aspen Lakes, and I measured this morning at 65 feet from curb to curb, where Sword Fern comes in and where Maiden Fern comes in. And you have a lot of left-turn traffic coming off Aspen and a lot of left-turn traffic coming off of Sword Fern, going into each other. And it would be very difficult to put an effective traffic control device at that intersection, because you really have two, it's not a four-way stop, sorry, it's not a four-way stop, so it'd be very difficult to manage traffic flow at that site. And potentially unsafe for motors and for pedestrians. So that's the challenge. A solution that has been identified is to possibly designate all or part of any future expansion of Sword Fern to actually be pedestrian, bicycle, and emergency access only. And if it's only part that's identified, then that section between Heron Lakes and Aspen Lakes, or that small stub is, if that were made, pedestrian access only, it would still give access to Old 99W, but then you wouldn't have traffic coming up Sword Fern and thereby getting those two left-hand turns coming on top of each other. And that would also, again, improve safety at the intersection, make it very pedestrian-friendly for walkability, and solve a traffic flow issue that you'd have where you have those two intersections on top of each other. So that is all that I'm here to discuss. I do plan to be a participant as site development takes place, but I did want, again, like I said, just bring that concern now. So hopefully, it could be something easily put in place that alleviates a future concern. Thank you.
And thank you for being proactive, too, in suggesting a solution.
That's what I was just going to say. We usually get here concerns, but no solutions.
And that's hopeful as they, you know, should this move forward, as they work on the planning, I think that the developers like to hear these kinds of things in advance.
Yep, if money is spent, it's hard to go back and undo that when there have been investments. So that was my hope of coming tonight. So I thank you for time. I know it's not annexation-related, but just going on record with that issue, so thank you.
Thank you. Did we have any additional public comment? Okay, I'll close the public comment time, bring staff back. Counsel, did you have any?
I just have a quick question. I don't know if you know this, Matt, or not. What was the distance between, and Julia, maybe you know, the distance between the new parking lot at Woodhaven Park and the intersection of the stop sign? Was it, was it less or greater than 65 feet? Because that was, I remember there was a big issue about whether or not we could even do a parking lot on Woodhaven, because it was so close to that intersection.
I'm sorry, I do not have that.
Maybe that's a question for Bob Galati, for sure, but.
I mean, we could certainly, I can get back to counsel tomorrow.
Because 65 feet does seem really tight. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay. I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to counsel, counsel, to discuss. Comments? Do you want to hear a motion?
I would just say, Josh, do we have any legal standing to deny this overall?
It appears to meet all the criteria.
Then I move that we approve ordinance 2017-005, approving amendment of, I'm on the wrong one, approving annexation, sorry, ordinance 2017-004, approving annexation into the City of Sherwood of 2.21 acres comprised of one tax lot and adjacent to southwest Old Highway 99W, right-of-way within the Brookman Edition Concept Plan area. And moving it to the next available date.
That's an option, so you can.
Well, that is an option.
That's mine, that's mine.
So.
That's my ordinance. I want to move it to the next one.
So you are in favor of voting on this twice?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm in favor of giving the public the opportunity to come and speak to us again, more so than that I really want to vote on it twice, but.
Okay, all right.
Well, if you're just going to go to the next hearing, you don't have to vote on it tonight.
Okay.
Well, the only thing I would want to mention is that August 15th is our next meeting, and that's going to be a really big meeting.
Yeah, that was my concern, is that we're going to have a really long meeting and to see something twice. I'm not seeing an overwhelming public interest in this particular issue, and we have gone through this many, many times, that the state legislature took away our right to deny annexations. And so I'm not hearing a second, so I am going to make a additional motion that we is it read, caption, and adopt?
Yes.
For an ordinance? Thank you. Read, caption, and adopt. Ordinance 2017-004, approving annexation into the City of Sherwood of 2.21 acres comprised of one tax lot and adjacent southwest Old Highway 99W, right-of-way within the Brookman Edition Concept Plan area.
Mayor and Counselors, if I may interrupt. Josh, go ahead.
We have an absent counselor.
We have an absent counselor.
So it has to come back for a second?
It has to come back.
Oh, well, there you go.
I was going to vote no, anyway, so.
Okay, all right, okay. All right, well, that's all right. Well, then we will just have a long meeting next time? That's all right, too? That's all right.
So Josh, do we need to restate the motion that Counselor Harris stated?
Yeah, because we got to get a second.
Or just move it to the next meeting?
It just goes to the next meeting.
It just goes to the next meeting.
Because of the news, because of what we voted.
Because we voted. Okay, all right. We want to make sure we procedurally get it right, so I get it.
Just a question, Julia, did we advertise the August 15th date?
I believe that we advertised it as a tentative date, yes.
Because you are going to have a meeting, a short business meeting, on July 25th.
Okay, and that is the next meeting.
So.
But I won't be here if we need unanimous.
It doesn't have to be unanimous.
Don't, you don't.
So I guess my question to Josh is that we advertised it as this evening and tentatively the next evening, you know, at August 15th. Is there any issue with us publicly announcing this this evening, that it would be a different date?
And at the time we advertised that, we did not know we were going to have a meeting on the 25th.
Right, because we've added it. I'm hearing from Counsel Young, she's in a favor of that. I'm in favor of moving it to the next available, which would be July 25th.
25th.
Okay, that's, yeah, that was the intent. So it sounds like, could we get that noticing done correctly?
Just ask one quick question.
Yes, yes.
Counselor King is absent tonight, so he's still technically a counselor.
Correct, he is still a counselor. You do not have a vacancy. The reason you're having a meeting on July 25th, among a number of things, is to declare a vacancy, because his resignation will be in effect by that point.
Okay, and so no action is needed, and so we can just move forward to our next piece of business. Okay, all right, thank you. Thanks for all the clarity. I'm sorry for the little bit of the jumbling around and the rocks and the, you know, working through the BMX caverns here. Okay, ordinance 2017-005, approving amendment of Section 10.12.010 of the municipal code relating to the powers of City Council and the City Manager to establish traffic control devices declaring emergency. City Attorney Josh Soper.
Thank you. So our current municipal code with regard to traffic control. Thank you. So, our current municipal code with regard to traffic controls does not delegate any authority to the City Manager to establish, alter, or modify or remove those traffic controls, except in the case of an emergency. We reviewed a number of other cities in our region to see how they handle those issues. And the majority of them, if not all of them, delegate at least some of that authority to the City Manager. And so, staff has prepared this ordinance to delegate specified authority with regard to traffic controls to the City Manager, and to set out a procedure by which City Manager would exercise that authority, which includes the criteria under which those decisions would be made, a noticing for the public, which is actually unusual. We don't normally have public notice for this type of decision. And also a method for the public to request that a traffic control be implemented or changed. So, we have that ordinance attached to the staff report. It lists out the types of decisions that the City Manager would have the authority to make those decisions on. And also, because we've received a number of requests for traffic control changes recently that we'd like to act on quickly, we're suggesting that this be adopted in one hearing. Unfortunately, that's not going to be possible because we have an absent counselor. So, we'll do at least one hearing, bring it back, and then at that time, we can potentially adopt it on an emergency basis so it goes into effect.
And we can, again, move it forward to the July date because that is the next date. And so, then we can be proactive in getting it done, if that's the will of the council. Okay, all right. I'll open up the public comment time. Do we have any public comment on this? Okay, I'll close the public comment and bring it back to staff. Does Counsel have any questions for staff on this one?
Julia, since we went through the process and you have a sign behind you, I think it's important.
He's been picketing all week.
Okay. Just for, so we do land use notices. We've actually got a different board that we generally use for land use public hearings, but these are some boards that we had had previously. And we use these for the street tree removal process, as well as any other public notice that we have. So, I don't know if you want me to pass it around, but so it's got public notice way up front, way up top. That's the City Hall reception number. And then basically on the notice, it just says, "Notice of Proposed On-Street Parking Changes. The city is considering restricting on-street parking in the following location." And then it would have a map and a site description, the estimated effective date of the change, submit your comments to City Manager Joe Gall, and then states, along with your name, mailing address, and physical location relative to the proposed change, provides the email, the address, and then comments, due date.
Okay.
And then most likely that would be posted in several locations within the vicinity that the proposed changes.
In our opinion, the folks that would be most interested in supporting or opposing that change would be the people immediately adjacent to wherever the change would be.
Sure.
Versus mailing a notice and getting to a lot of those kind of decisions. And as Josh said in our research, no cities do this. I think it's important, if you're going to make an area no parking, that the community immediately affected needs to know that before it goes into effect. So, I think some kind of notification is critical to the success of this change that we're proposing, so.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, I'll close the hearing and come back to council. Counsel, do you have any comments or...
I suppose if we have no comments, we also don't need a motion. It will just move forward to the next available agenda. Does that sound appropriate?
Right, and just to remind the public, we did already have a work session on this.
Yes.
So, the fact that we're not having a big conversation.
Right, right.
We had a conversation in a work session, so.
Yeah. That's always good to remind people, thinking that we're just sort of glossing over. There's no glossing.
We do, so I just jump in there for you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. No, I appreciate that. It's been warm today. I'm feeling a little tired. So, thank you for reminding me.
Thank you.
Okay, then we will move forward. City Manager report?
Just a couple items about upcoming council meetings. A week from tonight, just a reminder, will be the interview of Tuolton Hills Park and Rec District in this room. It's at 6:00 on July 18th. That's the third firm or organization that you will have interviewed in terms of operating and managing the recreational facility. I believe one or two of you cannot make that, so we will videotape it so you can watch the interview at a later point. So, that's a week from tonight. Then, as I mentioned, two weeks from tonight, you're going to have a short business meeting to take care of a number of items that we discussed tonight, and most importantly, to declare the vacancy for the upcoming resignation of Counselor King. And then also that night, something that we've been trying to schedule with Metro Commissioner Dirksen, who can be here that night, he will also be giving a brief metro update. But he will be here to be part of the Metro Community Enhancement Grant Committee, where you decide on the grant applications that have been submitted. And we will be getting those out to you as well, at least a week ahead of time to review. So, that will be on July 25th. You won't be acting as a City Council. You are actually acting as a different committee as part of that agreement with Metro. Then there is no meeting on August 1st, which is your normal August meeting, namely because that's National Night Out. And that will be taking place at Cannery Square, and the council members can meet with the community and participate in National Night Out, which is a growing event that goes on in our community. In addition, Representative Vial is going to be holding a town hall that same night at the Arts Center. So, folks can come talk to their state rep if they're happy or unhappy about what the legislature just wrapped up down in Salem at the Arts Center, and then also go over to the National Night Out event. So, we will not be having a council meeting on August 1st. And then your next meeting is August 15th, which could be a heavy agenda. That is, at least at this point, the tentative target date to make a decision on the RFP process. And then one last, just bit of business. Tom Pesimir is not here tonight. He went over to Central Oregon for the Oregon City County Management Association Conference. I'll be leaving at the wee hours of about 4:30 in the morning to get there because it starts at 8:00 tomorrow morning. So, I want to get there in time. But I'll be going over for the next few days as well for that conference, so. And I just wanted to let Counsel or remind Counsel of that. And I'll be back on Friday in the afternoon. So, any questions for myself on anything or the directors that are here?
Questions for Joe?
I did. I had a question on the RFP process.
Yes.
We had talked about visiting some of the facilities. Where are we at as a council or...
I've continued to kind of ask counselors whether they want to do that or not. I'm getting a mix. A number of counselors have been very busy, focused on other things, and said I need to really focus in the next week and figure out what I need to do to evaluate this. There is still interest in going to facilities operated by the three organizations. Obviously, two of them are local. So, if you wanted to go to the Clark County YMCA to see another facility operated by the YMCA at Columbia where Lamont, that's a fairly easy thing to go over the river and do that. THPRD has facilities right up the street in the Beaverton area, so that's pretty easy. The other is out of state.
Right.
So, I'm still getting feedback from individual counselors on whether they can do that or not.
It just seems like the August 15th kind of deadline, not that it has to be that date, but that's the...
Yes. And as I've mentioned to a couple counselors who I talked to today about that, if you did do that to visit a facility for health fitness, it'd be a quick, probably fly to that facility, inspect, do a site inspection, maybe spend the night, and then fly back the next day.
I guess the other question is, do we have the budget for that? We cancel all of our training, we cancel all...
I would think with the kind of decision that you're going to make, that's going to play out for many years. That's a small investment. If counselors feel it is important to go visit facilities operated by these companies, that at least two of the three you don't really have a lot of experience with or knowledge.
Thank you. So, we have had a pretty, you know, heavy summer. Normally, we try to keep it a little bit lighter. That has not happened, unfortunately, because of workload, not because your Mayor Clark is super main, but because we've had deadlines. And so, I just wanted to say that I appreciate all of the counselors that have stuck with it through these multiple extra meetings, extra things that we have to look through. And because we do need to make a decision, you know, this is, there are deadlines that we are trying to meet on the expiration of, particularly of the Recreation Operators Agreement. And it's not something that you delay. You have to go through the process. And so, I appreciate all of the extra work that everyone has done. And so, if counselors would like to see the health fitness facility that they've done, a, what do they call it, transition? They've done a transition. I think that that's something that is well worth on a facility that's worth almost $10 million to the citizens of Sherwood that they paid for. It's probably worth a lot more than that now. But that's what they paid for it in their taxes. So, we want to make a good decision. So, I think it's well worth that amount of money, that small amount. So, thank you, Joe, and thank you to counselors for really putting in the time. And, you know, as you said, if a counselor has to miss a meeting here and there, we've had a lot of extra meetings. So, it's understanding, or it's understood. And so, I appreciate staff putting together the video so that counselors can come and watch the video because people do have vacations planned. It is the summer. So, I understand that. And so, I appreciate staff kind of putting that extra effort to make sure that we get that information, that everybody has it, whether they're able to attend that particular day or not. Counsel President, do you have?
I don't have much of anything. I was going to talk about National Night Out, which is August 1st at Cannery Square, but we kind of covered that a little bit. We haven't had another Police Advisory Board meeting, so I don't have any updates from those. And the Senior Center, I was working, so I wasn't able to go to the opening day barbecue, but I got a report that it went really well and they had a lot of attendance. So, that's exciting.
I went, it was awesome.
So, you can talk all about it. And we haven't had a Senior Center meeting either since my last update, so.
Great, good.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes, my report is quite small as well. I have not attended a Library Advisory Board meeting because we had the interviews of two of the three proposers for the RFP the same night, same time. But I'm sure Adrian did a wonderful job working with the entire board without me. Speaking of the RFP proposals, I wanted to remind everybody that those proposals are online, I believe, on our website, and you too can review them. And I encourage everyone to do that, who's interested in what provider we may select in this whole process. We are really taking our time to evaluate everything from every different stance that we can think of to find the best operator for our city. And it's a multitude of different pieces to look at in making that decision. So, we're not taking that job that we have lightly. We are diving in very deeply into the guts of the matter. So, you may too, look at the documents. Now, are the interviews, were the interviews taped at all?
They were audiotaped. The two that we did previously, there's an audiotape, but we did not videotape.
Okay.
Everybody could make it. But since, I believe, two of you cannot make it, that's why we didn't do it.
Okay.
And the audio is available and the video will be available.
Okay, so, if you're really interested, after you read all the documents and the proposals that we've looked at, you may also listen to the first of two, the two proposers that we've already heard from by audiotape. Our next park and recreation meeting, unfortunately, I forgot the date, but it is a tour of the Cedar Creek Trail. So, if you're interested and excited about what Sherwood's doing for the Cedar Creek Trail, you can come to our meeting next Tuesday.
It's July 18th. It's next Tuesday.
July 18th is the date. And I'm really excited to do that, that tour and see where we are. We are kind of stalled out a little bit on that project because of the federal funding. And there are certain things that you can and cannot do at certain times of the year that pushes us a good six months out for certain things, so.
I think that date got pushed back.
As of when?
This past week. So, I'll clarify.
We'll clarify. I was just talking with Jason Waters today, and he's going to be leading it. And I think, as far as I knew, it was still on, but we will clarify and get notice out.
I believe Kristen's not here, but I believe it got pushed back.
Okay.
Pushed back to a further date?
Yeah, to a further date.
Oh, okay. Okay. Well, stay tuned and watch our website.
Sorry about that.
Thank you. Counsel Young?
I don't have much of an update. Haven't had any of my meetings, liaison meetings since the last. I was going to say goodbye to Dan. It's going to be his last meeting. But he's not here, and unfortunately, his dad was in hospice, so he's home with his family. But I'll thank him publicly for all his service that he's given to the city on the Parks Board, on the council, and good luck with his move.
Well, okay. Well, I have two updates. One is, we had a great planning retreat for the Cultural Arts Commission, led by none other than Maggie Chapin. It was wonderful. We welcomed two new members, which was Maddie Gavel-Briggs and also our new high school representative, Matthew Chantin. So, I think we have a full board, and they're great. Everyone is contributing a little piece of something that's pretty soon, everyone will see, coming in September, because we are working on a very big project. Can I say what the project is? It's called the Unity Project. So, it's a public art piece that is built by the citizens of Sherwood for the citizens of Sherwood. And it is going to be an integrated project for a full week in September. I think it starts September 20th. Thank you, Peanut Gallery in the back. Goes for a full week. And we will be having a celebration on that Saturday, which is the 23rd, I think. So, you know, look out for that because it's pretty amazing. And Maggie actually went to Americans for the Arts Convention in San Francisco. And what she brought back was really interesting to me, because I'm a data person. And I don't have the brochure with me, but it was a really great piece on how arts can actually affect, in a positive way, the economics of many other service areas, so parking and dinners out and a lot of other things. And it really creates great economic success. So, that's why arts is so important, especially public art, in going and doing the things that we're starting to do right here in Sherwood, from our Sherwood Foundation for the Arts that we had, a big show. Anything goes. We have one of our stars among us right now. Shout out to Madeline. So, it's a great thing. Now, segue into that, I want everyone to go on to signup.com.
Oh, my heavens, here we go.
Signup.com. And on signup.com, you will search for 2017 Robin Hood Festival Volunteers. That's what you're going to do, everybody. And when you do that, you'll find a list of all kinds of fun volunteer opportunities for Friday and Saturday. I am the volunteer coordinator because I'm also the council liaison. What? Oh, yes, and Sunday morning too, me and this guy over here, for archery absolutely, but also for breakdown. So, there's all kinds of, all kinds of activities, all kinds of volunteer opportunities, from the small tykes all the way up to, you know, pushing 90. So, a lot of things going on. The Robin Hood Festival is this weekend. And to segue to the Cultural Arts Commission, folks, they will be wearing their Unity shirts. So, you only see about five or six of us wearing the Unity shirt. And when you do, you need to ask about the Unity Project at the Robin Hood Festival. I and Counselor Garland and this wonderful woman here, Mayor Clark.
You, I know it, I know it.
We'll be at the souvenir booth at various times. And I think Counselor Young will be out and about with VPA because VPA, Voices for the Performing Arts, are going to be having their Disney's Alice in Wonderland Junior Musical. So, it's going to be a really huge event. And I think Counselor Harris will... huge event, and I think councillor Harris will, councillor president Harris will try to be there if her son doesn't win. That sounds so bad.
I was gonna say, my son is a loser. I will be there. That doesn't seem right. That doesn't seem right.
I am so sorry.
State baseball, come on.
If their team does not win at State at Baseball.
Okay, again, did not come out right.
Better.
Councillor Garland.
Councillor Kuiper, just before councillor Garland, there's, I want to highlight and embarrass two staff members who are in the room who are gonna be knighted. Many of us have been knighted.
Thank you.
So, Julia Haidoo, community development director, and Maggie Chapin.
Oh, congratulations. It's about time.
It's about time, so.
That's great. So, everybody come to the knighting, which is Friday night.
At 6:00.
At 6:00 PM at Veterans Park.
Memorial Park.
Memorial Park.
Sorry, councillor Garland.
All right, no worries. I'll be brief. I've made a push on social media to get everybody out to donate some blood in July. There were three, there have been two big drives so far in July, and I can tell by city manager Gall's arm that he attended one at the police department today. I know that's always a big one. I don't know if you guys have any idea on the numbers on how many people were there, but I know that that's always one of the most well-attended ones at the police department. I donated on July 2nd at the YMCA, and there's an upcoming one on July 26th between 1:00 and 6:00 PM at the Elks Lodge over on Elworth Road. I do want to encourage everyone to go out there. The person from the Red Cross that I spoke to when I was donating blood on July 2nd said that they have a massive shortage of blood right now. It's been very bad this summer, and he highlighted an example of, while it was a rare type of blood that a person needed in Bend, they had to have a lifelike helicopter fly from Bend out to, oh, what is it, just, just south of Wilsonville. I don't recall the name of the city, but they had to fly out there to get several pints of blood and then fly back to Bend. It's so short right now. It's campy, thank you. It's so short on blood that they had to have this special flight for blood, so please, if you can donate, July 26th at Elks Lodge, or of course, just go online, the American Red Cross, there's other ones in Portland, Tuolton, Tigard, but those are the ones in Sherwood, so it's, you know, convenient for you.
And you get cookies.
Cookies, juice.
Come on, it's cookies.
You get smiles and a pat on the back. I am going to sound like a broken record, but there are still a planning commission vacancy and applications, I believe, are still open through July 19th. Please get involved. It's a great commission, you know, it was highlighted earlier tonight by councillor Robinson. They make some big decisions in the city. They are really changing what our city's gonna look like. This is an opportunity to get involved, so please apply on the city website. And one last thing is, there was a post yesterday from the city of Sherwood about the TV FNR banning outdoor burning in all of the areas that are covered by TV FNR, and of course, that includes Sherwood. That ban went into effect on Monday, so go on to the city's website or the Facebook page for the details on that, but keep that in mind as well. That's it.
Thank you. So, I'll keep it brief. I've been going to all my regular metro mayors consortium, Washington County, and I won't bore everybody with all that. The big one that I wanted to kind of highlight was, this week, I went to the R1 Act 1, which is the Region 1 Transportation Board that I serve on, and ODOT was making an attempt to go through the transportation plan that the legislature did adopt. It was obviously sort of, it's in its initial stages. They're still doing some tweaking, but we do have a transportation plan. I did post something on my Sherwood mayor's site, so the Oregonian did a little write-up about it, but we did get a transportation plan in this legislature when we did not last time, so that will be good, and hopefully, we will see some street improvements and some revenue flow our direction to Washington County. That would be fantastic. So, I did want to kind of give an update on that. I'm very much looking forward to Robin Hood again this year. It's always exciting, and I wanted, I did this at the chamber this morning, I wanted to kind of highlight, a lot of people sort of forget about the archery competition, and they're changing the location this year, and, right? No. No, it's still at Edie. Still at Edie. Okay, I'm sorry. I had that mixed up with another change in location, but, so it's still at Edie Ridge, and if you've never been to this competition, it's really fascinating to see, and it goes, you know, all day long, and, you know, you can just come, bring the kids, and these archers are really fantastic. I mean, these, these are sports people, and they are really interesting to see. And I hadn't gone to it, you know, a few years back, I went to it for the first time, and I was like, wow, this is really, I mean, it's a, it's a whole series aboard, and, you know, it's, it's really exciting. It's very technical, very exciting. So, if you have not had a chance to do that, it's our 61st year of having.
61st?
Yes, the archery competition. So, that's pretty fantastic. I mean, that is a pretty great tradition right here in the city of Sherwood and, and part of the Robin Hood Festival, but it's kind of a part that I think that, you know, people love to go to the knighting because it's, you know, it's very exciting and, and fun, and people love to come to the, oh, you know, the, the bands and see, you know, walk around the booths and be with our community, but don't miss that archery. It's, it's pretty fantastic.
We beat those archers from England quite often.
Yes, yes, absolutely, yes.
I just wanted to touch, you know, what you mentioned about the archery competition, and shout out to Sandy Wallace.
Yes.
And Susan Dans.
Yes.
These two women, I am not kidding, they, when our dear Phil McGuigan decided to move on and gave up his president of the Robin Hood Festival Association, it took a tenacious woman to get down into the weeds and piece apart and build some substrate to build and expand this festival, and Susan and Sandy have done a tremendous job. They work 24/7. I am not kidding. They, I get texts all the time at all hours of the day and night from these two women. And Sandy, in particular, is, has been champion of this archery competition that we have with Nottingham in England, and every year, it goes back and forth, and we have won the, our archers have won this competition with Nottingham, England for, I don't know how many years straight, but they actually pass a trophy back and forth. If Nottingham ever wins it, we'll send it back. But this is a technical.
It's mainly fourth, right. It's mainly fourth. That's a fourth.
It's a technical competition, and it's really impressive, so shout out to those two.
Thank you, and I also wanted to give a huge shout out to councillor Kuiper for all of her work with the Robin Hood Festival. You know, this is a huge endeavor, and I, I would, I would really, I know that we are kind of silly and kitschy, you know, with our, you know, signup.com. Yeah, with her sign, but, but it really does take a lot of volunteers to put on a festival like this, and, you know, this is an all-volunteer festival. And so, you know, if you've come every year and enjoyed it and had a wonderful time with your family, think about maybe volunteering a couple hours at the Children's Craft, or, you know, at the souvenir booth, because it really, it actually enhances the experience. It, it makes it even more fun because then you're actually part of the festival and all the great things that are happening, so I highly recommend that you, you or your students that want to do it, your, let's go with the older students, the high school students want to do it, they're welcome as well, so get on that signup.com.
And Mayor, before you go, I think I know what you were talking about in terms of a venue change.
Yes.
So, I'm gonna take it up to me because it hasn't, we just heard this today. So, the Sherwood Relay for Life event, which has been around for 10-plus years. Is in early August, I believe, Saturday, August 5th, I believe. Normally happens at the high school, and it was planned to be at the high school, but we found out today that if you don't realize the high school turf has been replaced, but they're also redoing the track, and they unfortunately discovered that the track, underneath the track, needs some more work, and they're gonna have to do some additional concrete work, which is gonna take an additional two weeks to cure, which means the event cannot take place at the high school, so they are shifting gears. At this point, it looks like it's gonna be at the middle school. They're still kind of figuring out, okay, what does this mean and everything, and you probably will see stuff on social media from the folks that the location's gonna be shifting in early August, and that's what I told you today.
Thank you, that's what I, I knew there was something, but it just happened today, and that's why I didn't get it on my radar, so thank you very much. All right, we are adjourned.